Twenty twenty-two proposed budget, Georgia Department of Transportation radar list, and the rezoning request. We will have a public hearing at five thirty this evening. So with that, that's the agenda for this evening. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Any public comment? People fill out forms tonight?
No.
Not at all. All right. We'll begin with the Active Life Center name change. At the previous work session, representatives from Troup County made a recommendation to the city council to honor Zelma Brock by naming the West Point Active Life Center or a room in the center in her honor. So do we have any discussions this evening about that? Anybody?
I think there's been extended discussion about the possibility of working with the school board. I'm not sure that anybody's all heard of that, talking about the school.
Um, sad. Because I think, of course, some of the relationships pretty much don't move forward with this, or name that the license. I would find that they're aggressive, aggressively pushing for that. So I don't know if we want to stay a facility school as an option. Honestly, personally, I would have loved for that to have been the first choice. It's been that that's where her career was extensive at, that's where her most impact was at, and not just through students but staff and older people in the community as well. And I appreciate parts of it for taking the lead and going ahead and considering that. And I wouldn't want to be a slight to them for doing it. I don't know the timetable of how soon they want to do that, but if the school board is all for it, and if we could, and there was an option, hey, I would rather go that route, but at the same time, I wouldn't want to put up a big argument about this, because either way it goes, she's been honored in a great way, and I think we should be appreciative of that also.
I think we're all in agreement that we want to do something, and certainly, the school suggestion would be preferred by me as well, it sounds like, from other discussions that were had. That seemed to be the sentiment. But nobody has reached out to say anything to initiate that process. I mean, Gloria's not here, but I think originally, was it her suggestion?
Yeah, and I don't know if it's the direction that she was insisting with, like you said, she's not here to answer that, that we as a council do it, or was it something that we want to delegate the head to do, or whoever take the lead on that, the mayor or whatever. To me, it's just a simple question, you know, hey, look, this is what we're considering, this is the option we got, if it's possible, what school board, what actually the school board had to take. If it's something that's going to be prolonged and create debate, then I'm just personally, you know, whatever the easiest route.
I agree with that. However, we don't know until we ask the question if it's going to be prolonged, if it's going to, you know, if we get that sense from the first conversation, then we fall back to what we discussed at the last meeting, and move forward.
I guess it's an opportunity, Ed, if that's something that you can inquire upon.
Yep, we can reach out to the school board and find out what the process is and what they think it, you know, would entail.
I think the, uh, Park of Branks came to us originally asking about a room. And so, you know, we might could avoid a slight perception thereof by simply agreeing with them that a room would be appropriate there, and then pursuing the school with the.
But I don't think we want to give up the option of renaming the building for her if we don't get the school naming opportunity. So I think we just need more information at this point, and if it's going to be long and drawn out, then we back up and go with what I think this group said we wanted to do at the last meeting, which was name the building for her.
We would like to name the building, but I would say, and I don't think I would be alone in saying that knowing Ms. Zelma, she would be embarrassed to have two buildings named after her.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that's something that we trying to do, I'm trying to point that. But I think it's, it's the overall, from what I heard from the council and communication is that, you know, something is, is a good thing.
Yes.
But to, to put a light on her legacy in the community and in the school system and at West Point Elementary, that the appropriate place for, from West, the city of West Point would be the elementary school. Now, from the Parks and Recreation, that their, their vision is that they have to light something. And it's, it's good to be able to have two choices on the table right now to honor such a person.
And I think based on what we said last meeting, we've pretty much got that if we want to do that.
Yeah.
But, um, I, I think it's going to be a tougher sell for the school system. I mean, if you think about the new schools that have been built, there are very few of them are named for individuals either.
Yeah, but at the same time, there's unique to West Point, we only have one school.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I think that's a advantage that we have.
Right.
And here's the thing, is something like that, if you was to ask the community, because even when the, uh, Parks and Recreation announced the possibility of naming that, the response I seen from the community on social media was a stab. So I, I even think it would be just as great if it was a proposed name of the elementary school, the same thing. I don't, I don't think it'd be no pushback, no way of help, just being honest. Unless it's something in the school board policies and things like that prevent that, I think that would be the only thing that would give drawback. But other than that, knowing the people that I know in the school board and the school system and stuff like that, I think we will get the support. But in a day, there's a question to be asked by Ed.
Right.
I tried to get something done, a name, just a walk-in trail in the back of the school, and I, I, I couldn't get it done with Troup County.
And I think what it boils down to is, yes, the community is behind it, particularly the West Point community in this case, would be very supportive of this. We have one representative on the school board, that's who's going to make the decision. I don't know that we have enough clout with the entire board to convince a majority to vote for. I'm not saying we shouldn't go for that, though. I think that ideally is what we all agree that we'd like to see. Let's go for that, let's find out what's going to be involved, and then make a decision on whether we fall back to the, the Active Life Building being named for her.
Of course, it's one situation where you don't lose. I say it's one, we're in a situation where you don't lose.
Yeah, we're, either way, it's a win-win. So Ed, if you'll, if you'll put the request in, and then we can go ahead and carry this through Monday night, if you're all in agreement, saying we, we appreciate doing that, certainly name a room or the, the whole center after her, but we would really prefer the school to be done, if possible, and if not, push on forward with this.
Now, does that have to be even on the agenda if we're in the process of working logistics of a.
Well, we won't, we won't one of the others, so we might as well say, go ahead and do, do the center, but we prefer the school. And if you can do the school, you don't need to do the center, and then we're done.
You give them the argument that there's already, already been something done in her name, though, and so I think that's the county's, the school board's position, if they're not prone to do it. But anyway.
Well, we, I mean, if y'all want to just table it, we can table it if y'all, if that's what you prefer. I'm just thinking if we're, if you come back, Ed can send us an email before Monday, just give them a call tomorrow and say, is there, is there a possibility, how long does it take? And if they say it's a no, takes years, then let's go ahead and get this done, if y'all want to. If you don't, that's, we can wait, but at least we'll know.
And it was a tough cookie. I know Christian tried to help me with that, and she can say that it was made, phone calls made, phone calls not returned, and it went on and on and on to finally, we received a note, so. And I'm not saying that that's going to happen this time, but I just don't see, I just don't see it happening, but, you know.
I'm okay with them publicly telling, you know, in this situation, to be honest.
You're okay with what?
I'm okay with receiving a, a note, if they, you know, if they want to say no to this person, I'm okay with that, especially that we got choices. You know, I'm not saying it's going to be an issue that we're going to be pushing to fight, 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 fight.
Yeah.
You know, it's just a suggestion that we think is very appropriate and reasonable. You know, I don't see a reason to deny it as a longtime employee, and it's just not a employee, you know, these are somebody who represented the school system as a whole.
And I doubt we're going to call tomorrow and get an answer that we can make that decision about Monday night, although I think it's going to take, you know, a meeting or, you know, something beyond the next few days. We got, we're talking about trying to do this, do something in Monday's meeting. I doubt we're going to get much, in terms of a definitive answer.
At the, at the end of this session, I'll, I'll bring it up for the items for the agenda for Monday night. If y'all want to push it back and say, we'll wait, we'll wait till the January session and, and, and push forward with getting an answer from the school, and just, they can wait a month, that'd be fine, too. So I don't think they're going to withdraw their, their request to do it, so that'd be fine, too. All right, let's move forward then. The West Point Development Authority Board appointment. West Point Development Authority member Wiki Gladden's position is up for appointment. Wiki has applied to be reappointed to the board. We also have received an application from Audrey Bailey Gilliam for the seat. So with that, do we have any discussion?
Yes, uh, I've, I've been able to talk, I know, I've known, got to know Wiki over the years, starting before my time on the council. I know she served the Development Authority, also the House Authority Board, and I've also known Audrey for a long time, and very familiar with her work throughout the community and things that she's done with service and volunteer and things like that. I would highly consider both, if possible, if it was possible. But at the same time, I think that we should always consider people that put in applications, especially in situations where we got members that already serve on more than one board or serve on multiple boards or so, served multiple years. I think that when we have these opportunities, we don't use it as an opportunity to vote people off or anything like that, but as an opportunity to give others a chance to serve the community. I know it's other vacant boards that's open, and people probably would say, well, they can serve on this board or serve on that board. I don't think we should look at it like that. Audrey is a fine person as well as Wiki, but at the same time, I, me personally, I would have to, I would like to see the council look at opportunities to rotate out, to, to give other people chances in the community, a time to serve. I don't say, I'm not saying that that doesn't happen, but time and time again, I do see and I do hear people say, well, they've done such a fine job. That don't, when you take somebody off or you put somebody on, it's not saying that the last person did not do a good job, or they haven't did a good job, or the next person will, will not do a good job. So I, I would hope that that's the type of light that we would look at when we're looking at these openings. We talk about it so much that we don't get enough participation from people filling out applications and stuff like that. We solicit people to go, hey, put in for this and that. But when the time comes to make the hard decision to put someone different in, I think we tend, we tend to kind of take the easy route. And I think that we should hardly consider people once they put an application in, whatever. And I, I take the personal item more of, if we got a person right now, we can serve on two councils. That's no slight to her, thank her, thank you for willing to serve, because I know I've been on council and seen that sometimes we don't get one application. And for these vacant spots, or these people terms that come up, but I just want the council to be open-minded in this process, and they would consider, you know, hey, maybe it's time to put new blood on, on these different boards and things like that, and that's not saying something.
Did you peek my notes? Did you peek my notes? I made basically the same mental notes, because I wanted to say that Wiki has served admirably, and she's worked, served for, what, several five-year terms. Asked a question, I think, at the last meeting, I don't know that we, do we know how many years she's served, at least fifteen, I think? Two or three terms?
Two, probably, two terms, I would think.
Okay, so this would be the, the third, little five-year term, not to mention the other involvement, and, and we do appreciate that. I think it, this adds to our gender diversity on the authority as well as the age diversity. When you came on this council, I think that was very, very good, because, and I'm going to tell my age here, I guess, I'm really not, but we need to bring young people into the fold, we need to get more young people interested and engaging in, you know, advancing this city. And I think Audrey would certainly do that. She has exhibited some skills in a number of projects she's led, and they're well-known in the community, and my vote certainly would be.
And on top of that, what you said, what you just, the last thing about diversifying age and different things like that, and as we go forward as a city, I think that's important, to get younger people more involved in different things. And I know we don't get application from younger people, and that may be because of the stereotype that, that even myself had before joining the council, things like that, that it just.
Don't value.
It don't value, you know, and things like that. So I think, in any opportunity that we can to try to diversify in whatever spectrum we can, we should, and at the same time, it's not like we're losing. We can serve on a house board, that's good, that's great. It's not like we're losing nowhere, you know, but we're gaining, and that's how we got to look at it. How can we get more people interested and enthusiastic by the different boards and different things that goes on in the community, and give them an opportunity to serve. Your best recruiters are the ones that you have on board right now, you know, so if, if other people see that, if people are getting the opportunity, then I would encourage them to be more, be more involved, I would think. So I think this is something to consider. And it's just not this board, it's across the board, all boards.
Right. One of the criticisms of, of diversity, gender, you know, racial, age, whatever, is that you compromise on quality. I think in this case, you do have to look at that. You don't want to swap, you don't want to let that take priority over the quality of candidates that you consider a permanent board, and in this case, they both are excellent prospects. I think the, the point with me is the, the tenure that's already been served versus bringing some new ideas and some new people in.
Anybody else? All right. Next item, Glovis Memorandum of Understanding. The Glovis Memorandum of Understanding that was previously approved by the city and other entities has been amended to reflect an increase in the total cost of the project real property from twenty-one million to thirty-four million. Any discussion, council?
Does anyone know what the lease term is on that? As I read back through last night, I didn't see that, I may have missed it, I just scanned it. The lease term, the, to the, to Glovis.
As far as between the owner and the company.
The Development Authority will be the owner of it, right? They will lease it to the, um.
No, I mean, you know, that's, that's part of the whole system in Georgia, that the, the authority has to be the underlying owner in order for you to do the tax payments, but they don't actually receive any type of lease payment from the company.
So what is the lease term, though? The length of time that this is in effect, just until it's paid?
As far as the authority, as, as long as there is a need for the, for that structure to be in place, I suppose. I, I guess I've never really contemplated that question.
Okay. Yeah, we talked about longevity of businesses in the, in the area, and you hear all kinds of rumors. I hadn't heard any rumors about that, this specific one, but it just occurred to me as I was reading through it, that I didn't see any reference to lease for X number of years, renewable, whatever. And that may not be a thing with the state of Georgia, it may be standard for everybody, all communities. Just curiosity question. I won't hold this up, I know you've got to get to the parade.
Anybody else on that one? All right. The twenty twenty-two proposed budget. Any questions or comments regarding the budget? All right. Hearing now, the Georgia Department of Transportation radar list. The Georgia Department of Transportation has provided the city with a list of local roads and speed limits for enforcement by radar. The West Point Police Department has reviewed the list presented by GDOT and has recommended no changes to the list of streets. Any questions? Comments? All right. The final one is, we have a rezoning application for parcel located one hundred Sandtown Road from General Commercial to R one A Residential. And we are holding a public hearing at five thirty today for this rezoning. Is there any discussion or questions, council, regarding that? All right. Then we'll move on then to the items on the agenda for the business meeting Monday, December thirteenth. Normally, this would be what it is, but I'll, I'll bring it up again, that the first item is the Active Life Center name change, then the West Point Development Authority Board appointment, the Glovis MOU, the twenty twenty-two proposed budget, GDOT radar list, and the one hundred Sandtown Road rezoning. So do I hear possibly that you guys do not want to do the Active Life Center name change until we get more information on the school possibility?
I don't want to word it as we don't want to.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
Let's just table it as we collect more information.
Yeah.
Okay. So while we do that, then, we'll just list the, okay, the items on the agenda for the business meeting Monday, December thirteenth, two twenty, two thousand twenty-one will be the West Point Development Authority Board appointment, the Glovis MOU, the twenty twenty-two proposed budget, the GDOT radar list, and the one hundred Sandtown Road rezoning, and we'll table the, till the next round on the Active Life Name Change. So that's, that's it for our items on the work session, and announcements tonight. I know we do have the Santa on the nineteenth at the depot, so bring the kiddies from one to four for cookies and hot chocolate, and to come visit Santa at the depot. We have the Georgia, Ms. Georgia Queen, what is your title?
Senior, senior.
Georgia.
Ms. Senior Georgia.
Ms. Senior Georgia Queen in the parade this evening.
I'm the old queen. You can say it like that.
Riding in a convertible, sugaring tonight, so.
All the mares are in the parade.
Anybody else have any announcements?
One thing on the January meeting.
Yes.
We typically do not have the two work sessions prior to the January meeting.
Okay.
However, I think we're going to have some things on the agenda that we're going to need to, we're going to need a work session in order to talk about those things. So with holidays and all that, I would like to recommend that we have our Thursday work session, which is the sixth of January, and then, of course, the business meeting will be that following Monday, the tenth. And that way, we would have time to discuss any items that we have on the, on that agenda, you know, because we'll do the appointments of the, the staff and all that at that meeting, so. That'd be my recommendation, is just to have that one work session.
Good with everybody?
Ed, there, I was going to say that, this is probably an announcement that Sandra will not make, or maybe she has already made it, but her son, and y'all probably all know this, but I linked in last night, I guess, and realized that her son, Jason, was, won the runoff election for District One in Atlanta City Council. So she's building a legacy of politicians in the, in her family. Congratulations.
Thank you. Some people said congratulations, and others said deceptively.
I wish I wanted to do that one.
Proud Mama's moment. He's actually the first African-American to be elected in that district in forty-eight years. So that's quite an accomplishment, and a lot of people in this room gave him donations to help get it done, so thank you all so much.
Look, my son lives in his district.
Okay, awesome. And Power Train, Power Tech, what's the, what's the new name? Power Train?
Power Train.
Power Train, I want to, Power Train, I want to thank them for adopting around twenty-nine children for Christmas in the community. Every year, they reach out to us, and, and we said, how many times, Kristen, we're not going to do it this year, but we just want to make sure all the babies have what they need for Christmas, so we, we did a few, so just want to say thank you to them.
This is not really an announcement, an announcement, but Ed, if you could, could follow up with the people that handle, I notice we got some information in here about trash picked up or something in certain areas. Web one a road, it's in the, um, tenth street down near the Giverns Plaza. Several, several comments there, and I know that border's on some private property versus private, but it's, it's in bad shape in both areas, actually.
That's been, they're picking up every day that they can, it's, it's just the constant.
We just got a little problem.
Never, never-ending problem to share.
Maybe time to issue a citation.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
All right, let's do this, let's, let's adjourn the work session, let's do this right, and then we'll have a few minutes, then we'll start the public hearing, and then we'll get on our way. So I need a motion to adjourn.
Submove.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So that's over. In just a few minutes, we'll do the work session for however long it takes to do the work session, I mean, I'm sorry, the public hearing, public hearing. I don't know why I said work session. At five thirty.
Did, um, did both of the restaurants that were supposed to open in November open?
Neither, neither.
Neither one of them did?
Carvelas.
They hadn't changed their minds, have they?
No, they're still working, they're just.
Carvelas and Bull Street, Hibachi.
Bull Hibachi looks like it's ready to go, you peek in the windows, it looks like it could open any day. Carvelas had a problem getting heating and air equipment, so they ran into a hiccup there. But I, they're, they're within weeks of opening.
That awkward three minutes. That's all I need, is Carvelas in West Point.
Yeah. Everywhere you go, huh?
I eat there all the time. There's one in La Grange and one in Hogan's Way.
I know.
Are you going to have one in West Point?
And they've got one in Noonan, and they're talking about Sonoya and somewhere south of here, I'm not sure.
Up the ladder.
They're going to open them up everywhere.
What type of food is it?
It's, it's a pizza place, they do.
Chicken bites.
Chicken bites, which is different than chicken wings, but they're good.
Scrumptious.
Yep.
Vincent's very good, too.
We just got to get parking downtown for all these restaurants.
Reach out to the board and see what they, if they think it's a possibility, and then get back with us, that's why we tabled it.
Is that what you're looking for? How'd you get it?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Actually, I don't know.
I'm telling you, she just said that, I don't have my slip. Any counts?
Can't get in the parade without a slip.
Did you know?
We've got a real episode here.
Did you know? Two minutes, you got one, you said that, and you just got one?
No, but I take some more in the tote, drop it off and give it to the public.
Okay, all right.
Well, if you have a hearing and you don't hear anything, you have to sit there and not hear it.
Oh, you watch me, watch.
You have now challenged.
Do what?
He has now challenged you.
Yeah.
See how quickly you can.
I have a second hand on this clock, yeah. Oh, you do? You got a second hand?
I do have a second.
How'd you get a second hand? Well, I got an iPhone, but I don't have a, I don't know about how to get a second hand. Well, you tell me when it's five thirty, Joe.
You got ten seconds.
Ten seconds, nine, eight.
Five, four.
I don't know if you ever noticed the clock, the zone, the zone's changing.
Is it down?
The hand's five thirty.
Okay, okay, y'all. Let's call order a public hearing to order for the following items, the rezoning for one hundred Sandtown Road. Is anyone in attendance to speak in support of the rezoning of a parcel located in one hundred Sandtown Road from General Commercial to R one A Residential? This is what you're asking about, Joe. You here? Okay. Is anyone here to speak in opposition to the rezoning? Is anyone here to speak in opposition to the rezoning? The public hearing is now closed. All right, that's it. Y'all have a good evening. I'm ready, you ready? That's it, we adjourned the work session, we just opened and closed the public hearing, cause we knew nobody would be here, we don't normally do them that quick.
Can I just get a couple of quick questions?
Real quick, I can get a break.
Sorry, which school we all?
Jason, I changed my mind, I want a refund.
West Point Elementary, let's see, West Point Elementary.
Because he won.
We do appreciate them, long as we do. Active Life Center, certainly in favor of that, we just think it'd be an even greater honor for you to do that. If possible.
So who would be changed to Zoma?
Well, we changed to something to that, yeah, whatever they want, you know, we're not saying they have.
I want a refund, tell, tell me you sent my refund back, since he won. First of all, he cleared.
Text you my question.
But, yeah, we're just. Yeah, thank you.
So that's, that's a blessing.
Can you get in your car with that, Mom?
I can, but it's so hard, I was trying to get it on, cause it's so hard to put it on.
I was listening, y'all talking about Ms. Jalen. I, I was listening, y'all talking about names, I was talking about her.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm, I'm all for it, but it's one thing I think y'all ought to consider.
What?
It's good, and I beat her.
Well, oh, God.
No, I mean, I don't mean it that way, but, but look at L B sites.
It is.
I'm just saying. Just a fool's thought.
Yeah, it is.
You want me to hold your train?
Got pants and everything.
Look at L B sites, when we got them, that school was out of their society.
Oh, we, oh, okay, what they say, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I understand. This is probably, no way in this, it's so.